Commander McBride, could you lead us in the pledge, sir?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, individual with liberty and justice for all.
A moment of silence for the men and women in the armed forces. Thank you.
All right. Jeff, come on down, please.
All right. Well, what time do I have?
What did you think?
All right. Good evening, Mayor Bass, ladies and gentlemen. I'm here tonight to ask a request. The American Legion strives to promote membership and maintain our strong stature as the oldest military organization in this country. We are presently 2.2 million strong, and when we go to Washington to vie for benefits for the veteran, our volume and numbers speak. I'm here to promote the signing up of every veteran in New Milford that works for the town of New Milford, and I believe I have a strong chance of getting them to all sign up and become members that the American Legion can help. What I'm here for is to ask the Town Council and the town of New Milford if you could pay the dues for all the town veterans for the first year to get them in the organization and make them available for numerous benefits that are available for them if they pursue them. I have left 39 applications with the mayor tonight to leave you so you can get them to the veterans and get them signed up. Our town honors the veterans in so many ways, and it humbles me to know that we are cared for and recognized for service rendered, in paying for the veterans' dues for the first year that will instill in them the pride that they deserve and also show them that the town of New Milford, the American Legion, and our vast benefit system for them can be made available today. If you grant my request, the dues would be $35 for each veteran for the first year, and after that, it would become the responsibility to maintain their dues and honorable stature in the American Legion each year by themselves. An example is if you had 30 veterans in New Milford that worked for the town at $35 each, that would equate to $1,050 that the Town Council would have to approve. I'm asking that you please give us some serious merit because the veteran deserves to be recognized and helped as much as possible, and if we work together, we can accomplish anything we set our minds to. All who sit at this Town Council, I have tremendous respect for, and I will maintain that respect and position when it comes to asking or working with any of you to accomplish any goal put before us. Respectfully, Jeffrey McBride, American Legion Commander.
Thank you, Jeff.
Peg Molina, please.
Hello. I've written my comments tonight. My name is Peg Molina, and I live at 47 Park Lane East. I'm here tonight as a member of the Community Center Committee, but I'm speaking for myself only, not for the committee. I've served on many boards and committees in my life, and I find this to be the most frustrating and difficult experience I've ever had, starting with bad weather, a 25-member committee now better at 15, but still unwieldy, a confusing charge, and recurrent delays so that we can bring information to council, you could be provided with answers, look at this information, and consider the facts when we've requested a given action. This has been a pretty frustrating and excruciating volunteer experience. But that aside, I must say that while we have been continually warned about and tried scrupulously hard for eight months to refrain from exploring the placing of a potential community center at John Pettibone, it seems to be the topic that commands this council's attention whenever the Community Center Committee makes a presentation to you. Last meeting, Councilman Bayer stated that people are already in Pettibone. We need to give this a chance. It's a work in progress, meaning JPCC. And Councilwoman Francis said we need to get some real numbers about the cost, referring to Pettibone and East Street, and also that it's impossible to discuss what the town wants when we have a building that says "Community Center" on it, namely John Pettibone. Councilman Nahom talked about nonprofits being situated there, and maybe we should give it meeting Pettibone a try, as well as expressing his concerns on this locale. Further discussion ensued that largely focused on JPCC before the vote to table until tonight our request to fund a professional survey. So, I'm going to go ahead and share some information in my opinion, and maybe we can all move forward with a bit more clarity. My strong sense is that people all around town think that we do, in fact, have a community center, John Pettibone Community Center, which has not yet been fully developed. The sign is up. Activities take place there routinely, from programs and events held by the three town departments to scouts, visiting nurse agency programs, New Milford Council on the Arts programs, townwide informational meetings on transportation and housing. Boards, committees, all kinds of groups hold their meetings there, and on and on. There are a lot of things going on at the building that we currently call John Pettibone Community Center. People wonder what is happening with the rest of the building. They wonder why nothing is happening with the rest of the building. They now see landscaping and soon sidewalks being built on the perimeter of the building. So let's get real and talk about this building. You have three town departments who are thrilled with their space at JPCC. If the building is closed and sold, my feeling is that you will have a huge outcry and a major dilemma as to where to provide these departments with adequate ADA-compliant space for running their programs. True, it's not all utilized as well as it possibly could be. There could be sharing of space and better utilization to maximize available rooms for other needs, and in fact, this already does happen between the three departments and with some outside groups that come in and utilize the social services meeting spaces. Everyone enjoys collaboration and wants to play nice. During my tenure of almost one year in the building, there was not one water leak in our area or around the building during that time, and we've had a lot of rain this year. Our building maintenance department has done a fantastic job patching and repairing and making that building as functional as possible, and that's not to say that repair is not needed. It certainly is, but I don't think the whole building needs a brand-new roof right now, nor is the heating system about to go. Things are in decent shape and could be improved over time, and there are grants our town could seek to help with these costs.
Peggy, do you have another minute, please?
Another minute, okay. What do you do with a building of this size? It's big, and we don't need the whole thing for town departments. So, one thing I will say is that meeting space in this town is inadequate. In the Richmond Center, we routinely had difficulty fitting in outside groups to accommodate their meetings. The new meeting rooms at the library would be available to the community only if the library does not need them itself. Churches are a capacity, so meeting space would be a great way to help. Next, I think that New Milford has a wonderful opportunity to create a place that combines town departments, space for events and meetings, and space for some of the nonprofit organizations that enrich the town we live in. Maybe our group found little precedent of this in other communities, but we somehow neglected to look right here. New Milford has housed nonprofits within its town buildings for years. The Red Cross in the Richmond Center. Currently in the Richmond Center, Loaves and Fishes and Wheels, both nonprofits.
Peggy, will you wrap it up, too?
Okay, I'm wrapping it up. Cert in JPCC now. So, all of these groups, others could come in, could offer a fee, and the amount that I knew of for Thrift Mart Robotics Culinary was over $70,000, not $48,000. We need to look at helping families that are the heartbeat of the community, who occupy the big houses, provide their energy for volunteerism, attend our churches, become our coaches, and so on. So let's stop dancing around the very viable opportunity at hand. It would be great to get a professional survey to focus the efforts, but I think this committee is being asked to be derelict in our duties if we do not face the question of JPCC head-on. So please, please...
Peggy, thank you very much.
Okay, my last sentence. Please discuss this, counsel. Please look at what is right in front of us and be transparent about the objective of having a community center committee. Please help us determine what the next step should be. Thank you.
Thank you, Peggy.
Chris Cosgrove, please.
Chris Cosgrove, 143 Sunny Valley Road. I'd like to comment on the recent election and specifically the library referendum and the fact that we had a referendum. I know as a body, you had to make a decision, do we do a town meeting or do we do a referendum? And I think some felt that a town meeting would be better to maybe get it, and these are my words, push through, pack the place with supporters, and get it voted through. But instead, you chose what I believe is the wise and the right decision, put it to a town referendum, so everybody's got an opportunity to speak and voice their opinion on it, and I think the results showed that a project that is well thought out and you showed the community that it has value and it has financial support and backing can get overwhelmingly approved, as this one did, and I hope we continue to use this model for projects that we put forth to the town. So, thanks very much.
Thank you, Chris. Jeff Winter, please.
Good evening. Jeff Winter, 22 Mori Road. Unfortunately, Mr. -- did Ms. McBride leave? It's too bad. I wanted to tell him my uncle's World War -- my great uncle's World War I story, but I'll leave that between Jeff and myself. I, too, am here to talk about the Community Center Committee because I'm very disappointed that it is not on the agenda tonight. This council actually specifically requested November 13th, and I guess one town council member weighed in saying that they couldn't be here tonight and they wanted to comment on it or be part of that vote. Problem is, that sets us back even further, and if we kind of want to go through the history of that, unannounced to the committee, we were on the June 25th agenda about possibly at the Town Council's suggestion to hire a firm to conduct market research. And as my colleague Peg Molina just discussed, it seems like whenever we come here, the words "East Street" and "John Pettibone" are discussed more than they're discussed at our meetings, and I think there's a real misconception that, I mean, the elephant in the room is in this room. The elephant in the room is not in our committee. It's not. In fact, Ms. Francis, you actually, at that June 25th meeting when we were talking about doing a marketing study, you said that the marketing firm should come in with no preconceived notion, and that Pettibone being called a community center essentially already puts it in that space. But again, I want to guarantee you that that would not be the case, and you stated that you wanted to see a market research project done, and also Councilperson Hita also said the same thing, that there should be market research, and they wanted to know what the cost was. So we were actually asked to go out and get multiple bids, which we did. We actually got four bids, and we settled on one, and we brought that before the council on September 10th, I believe it was. It will then be two and a half months since that time that you guys have had to deliberate on that. Now, the other concern that this council had on the July 9th meeting was us meeting the deadline or actually coming up with a final report prior to having our term extended. Our term was extended to January 24th of 2019, but everyone expressed the interest that we get that report done beforehand. We'll never meet that deadline. We'll never even get -- we won't get the data because of the delay, delay, delay from requests that this body wanted. If you want market research, we went out, we got the bids, we got a professional firm, we got a professional firm, and we brought you the option, but what are we supposed to do? You know, we can't do -- if you don't give us the money, we can't do the study. We can still give you a final report, but you won't have the professional market research study that you requested. And, you know, we have answered multiple questions over multiple times, and we've tried to meet those deadlines as best we could. It is now exact -- and one of the things that we were supposed to look at, that we were encouraged to look at, and it makes a lot of sense, is to take a look at the Facilities Utilization Subcommittee Report. That report is not finished, although Wendy Follenback tells me tonight that miraculously it's now finished. It is three months to the day that they gave that report, and that was when their committee was done. Can you imagine if our committee waited three months to give this Town Council anything?
Jeff, do you have another minute, please?
Thank you. We get our head bitten off on a regular basis. Lastly, there are at least three members of the Town Council that are members of the Economic Development Corporation. As part of that, I'm sure that every member of this council, as well as the Economic Development Corporation, wants to see public funds spent wisely, and also, as we've seen through the Utilization Commission, our committee, there's a lot of unused space in town. Well, the Economic Development Corporation, which in the last month or two, has gone out and decided to rent space in a private office building. I don't understand that. Why is the New Milford Economic Development Corporation spending money, public money? Even though they're a 501(c)(3), there are multiple public servants on that corporation, and we are spending money to pay rent? Does that make sense? And in case you're wondering...
Jeff, do you want to wrap it up, please?
Yeah. I think it's interesting, though, that in looking at the most recent Form 990, which is the tax form for 501(c)(3)'s, they show that over the lifetime of the Economic Development Corporation, 99.63% of the funds are public funds. The only part that isn't is interest that they've earned. So if you're going to spend the public's money to rent space from a private facility when we have all this extra space in town, what are we talking about? Does this make any sense? Where's the oversight? And I ask the members of the corporation to take that very seriously and explain it to taxpayers.
Thank you, Jeff. That's the end of the list. Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Next, mayor's remarks. First, I'd like to congratulate the New Milford High School Band and Color Guard as they are now state champions, so congratulations to the Color Guard, their coaches, parents, and the band, all for a great job. Also, I'd like to say congratulations to Mike, to your son, Eli Nahom, state open cross-country champion and three times SWC champion. I'd like to also thank our veterans, our Veterans Committee, for a wonderful Veterans Day ceremony. I'd like to thank Commander Jeff McBride, who had left, and State Commander of the VFW, Mr. Jim Delancey, and all the veterans that helped during the ceremony. I'd also like to thank the Daughters of the American Revolution for a wonderful breakfast and also for a grave marker ceremony that I attended yesterday for Solomon Hill and his wife, Amy Stonehill. For those that haven't been to some of our cemeteries, there are lots of Revolutionary War heroes, as well as World War II, World War I veterans that are there that makes our town proud, and I just want to thank the Daughters of the American Revolution for them continually to bring to light our wonderful sense of community, so I thank them for that. I'd also like to thank the voters, no matter how you voted, that came out in November and spoke your mind in record numbers, so we'd like to thank you for that. I'd like to personally thank you for passing the library referendum and the charter revision. That's something that was wonderful to see with a large swath of our population approving those measures. I'd also like to thank the library committee for years and years of service and finally getting the public during a referendum to approve the renovation. I'd also like to thank the Charter Revision Committee for all of their hard work and also the public for approving the charter revisions. I'd also like to let people know that Town Attorney Matt Grimes is going to be having charter classes on November 20th and December 7th at 7:00 p.m. right here, Neapolitan Room, where he's going to go over some of the changes within the charter and how it affects our town government. Also, we have police -- our soon-to-be Police Chief Spencer Ceruto here. He's going to have a swearing-in ceremony tomorrow at 7:00 p.m. at 19 Main Street, so for those that can attend, we'd love for you to be there. Coffee with the Mayor is this Saturday, 9:30 a.m. at Town Hall. Love to see you here. Got coffee, doughnuts, Danish? Love to see you. As Jeff had talked about before, the community subcommittee will be on the November 26th agenda, where we will be talking about moving forward with the survey. There were some council people that asked to be here, to be present when we make that decision. Real quick, road work still continues, even in this inclement weather. We're finishing up Long Mountain Road, Pickett District, for those that haven't driven over there in a while, where the railroad crossing was, there was always kind of the bump in the road there with the partnership with the railroad. We were able, and DPW, we were able to get that fixed, and then in the spring, we're going to be looking at doing some more of the railroad crossings and working with our partners at Husatonic Railroad. We're still working on the Mill Street Bridge. We had inclement weather today where they were looking to do a little bit of the paving. Hopefully tomorrow will be a little bit better weather, and we can start with that. On Sega Drive, some of the drainage is being done. Bluebonnet and Littlefield, they're putting a little more of the curbing in. Also, just to let everyone know, that Thursday, we're scheduled into Friday night, we're supposed to have some -- or Friday morning, we're supposed to have some snow. DPW is being prepared for that, just in case we do have that snow and have to go out to plow and sand. And lastly, real quick, because our Town Council, the next one will be after Thanksgiving, I'd like to wish you and your families a very blessed Thanksgiving. We have a lot in this country to be thankful for, and I just wanted to say happy Thanksgiving to everyone in New Milford. With that, I'd like to entertain a motion for the consent agenda.
I'd like to move to accept the consent agenda. Item four on our agenda, items A through D.
Can I make a comment? Sorry. The road closures, is that something that should be on there? Because, I mean, road closures should be taken, it shouldn't be just a rubber stamp. It should be something that's discussed.
If you'd like it taken off, we can take that off the agenda.
Yeah, I'm just not sure that's something that should be on there.
Okay.
Are you talking about both of them?
Yeah, just in general, you know, people in Main Street, especially because it closes, they don't always like the road to close.
This already went through traffic authority?
Yeah.
It's already gone through all that.
Then why, if that, if it's a rubber stamp, then why is it even coming before us in the point I'm making?
No, I'm just saying, if you'd like for us to take it off the consent agenda, we will. Put it right back on, like at the bottom, at the back.
Okay.
So I'll amend my motion, move to accept the consent agenda, items A through C.
Second.
Any discussion from four A through C? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you.
Item five. Move to...
No, we're going to do that at the end.
We're going to do them at the end. Item five, move to accept the following appointments and reappointments. Housing Partnership, appointment of Lisa M. Bowman, filling a vacancy, her term 11/13/2018 through 11/30/2018. The nonprofit application Subcommittee, oh, excuse me, Lisa's on Housing Partnership. Nonprofit Subcommittee, Application Subcommittee, appointment of Timothy J. Harkin, filling the term of November 13th, 2018, through April 22nd, 2019. And the Riverfront Revitalization Committee, all terms November 9, 2018, through May 10, 2019. Reappointment of Julie Ann Bailey, Richard Rosiello, Christopher Gardner, Lucy Wildrick, Frank Worgo, Leva Furman, and Adrian Oricchio.
Second.
And we have Ms. Bowman here...
Oh, yes.
...who is filling the vacancy for the Housing Partnership. Thank you, Ms. Bowman, for wanting to get here. Does anybody have any questions for Ms. Bowman?
Just one quick question for you, Pete. It's only a two-week...
Correct. And then what happens is those are expiring, so we'll just reappoint her again.
So they expire all at the same time?
Correct.
Got it. Thank you.
Okay. Do I have all three? Second.
Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you.
I move to go into executive session. The Town Council...
I'm just going to start with the first one, the chief.
And for the first item, we would ask that Personnel Director and Town Attorney join us in executive session.
And Chief Ceruto.
And soon-to-be Chief Ceruto. Second.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you.
Make a note that in an executive session, there were no motions made and no votes were taken. However, we do have just a bit of clerical change, Stephanie, that on item 6B from the state, we had Tracy Dunn, not Bernard Slowick, who was here, and on item C, John Tower was absent.
And that is specifically the Office of the State Control?
Yes. It is. Ms. Tracy Dunn instead of Bernard.
So Tracy Dunn's in the State Control, as you said?
Yes. Okay, so a move to go back into regular session.
Second.
Any discussion?
No, 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 you don't have to do that. Right?
Well, I don't know. We talked about some stuff. Can't hurt.
All right.
Okay. So we have a motion and a second, any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you.
Item seven, Chief of Police, move to approve the mayor's appointment of Spencer Ceruto as Chief of the New Milford Police, New Milford, Connecticut Police Department at a starting salary of $115,000 for the period beginning November 15th, 2018, ending November 14th, 2022, and to also authorize the mayor to execute a contract of employment reflecting the same.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Congratulations. Do we have a motion for, to suspend the rules?
Certainly. A move to suspend the rules for the addition of item... Let me find it on here. We're going back. It'll become item 12... Eight. We're going to put it in here.
Yeah, it would be Candlewood Solar.
Oh, that's the one you want?
Yep.
Okay. All right. So we want to move... Oh, it's not on here. Okay, sorry. We want to move to add an item for update on Candlewood Solar to appropriate the funds? Okay, all right. Well, I didn't know where you were going with that one.
Sorry.
That's okay.
Second.
Need a sec. Thank you, Walter.
How about a second something?
So we're, we were looking to...
Did that pass?
There's a first and a second.
Second.
So all those in favor? Any discussion? Add to the agenda? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you.
Is that the first way to rules and then...
Right.
Just, let me first have a way to rules and then have a second vote on it at the end. Did you have two votes or just one?
Just had the one vote.
Okay, so that was motion to suspend the rules.
Suspend the rules.
Right.
Suspend the rules.
Now we're adding the item.
Correct.
But if you're to add the agenda, you need whatever it is you move.
Right. Right. So I did move to add the item of Candlewood Solar to the agenda after the rules were suspended, and we have a second.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you.
They're going to be 7B or what is it going to be?
It would have to be, no, it's going to have to be an eight. Oh, I guess it could be a seven. I don't know. It's not a chief.
We need the wording for it.
Yeah, I know. Well, you might have that.
So I would entertain, I would entertain a motion to direct the board of, to direct the finance director to, if approve the appropriation of up to $15,000, to have Malone and McBroom, have Malone and McBroom do the engineering study for Candlewood Solar.
To review it.
Stormwater management plan.
To do the study or to review it?
To review.
To do it. Do it. To a maximum of $15,000.
Maximum $15,000.
You're doing a transfer or you're doing a special appropriation request?
It'll be up to the finance directors.
Does the mayor actually move that?
Walter? Walter's second in it?
Does the mayor actually move it then?
I moved it.
Any further discussion on the motion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you.
Okay. Glad you threw that one in. Okay, move to item eight, Riverfront Revitalization Committee, final report.
Mayor Furman.
Lady, you can just give us a second to get the show open, please. Good evening and thank you to town council for allowing the Riverfront Committee to be here tonight to present our final report. And thank you for extending us another six months, so I guess you'll get another report after this.
Hope so.
As you know, we were established back in 2016 or '17, whatever. We've been in existence, three times six, it's 18 months. And in those 18 months, we've accomplished a lot. We have worked with the following vision in mind, to transform New Milford's Riverfront into a vibrant district with new residential and commercial amenities, with public open spaces, to improve access for public transportation and attractions for residents and visitors, to connect the Riverfront to the downtown Village Center, which will contribute to New Milford's economic vitality, creating a vibrant sense of community to benefit our economy, attract jobs, residents, and visitors. And all the while, we will respect and protect the Housatonic River and its sensitive ecosystem while expanding its accessibility. The committee took as its focus area from Boardman Bridge to Veterans Bridge to Lover's Leap Bridge. However, as our first stage, we're focusing on what we call our primary focus area, which, and this map is going, south is on the bottom, so we're going from Century Brass all the way up along Housatonic to Young's Field. We are crossing the river in this primary focus area to take in the property that is going to be turned over to the town as open space and the Conservation Service, and also properties just south of Veterans Bridge, which are the gateway to New Milford. We've worked with the following strategies to help us achieve our vision, to strengthen connectivity from the downtown to the Riverfront, from the Bleachery to Century Brass, and again Lover's Leap to Veterans to Boardman Bridge. To do this, we're going to have to overcome physical challenges and promote linkages between the Riverfront and the Village Center. Right now, the railroad tracks are a physical impediment to crossing from one side to the other. We have roadways that are impediments crossing from one side to the other, and we have a very, very steep embankment at Young's Field Road. We want to improve the transportation infrastructure with an improved traffic flow, and we want to avoid dividing the Village Center anymore from the Riverfront, and there's a chronic need for enhanced parking options. We'd like to increase vibrancy and excitement with restaurants, cafes, music, public art, museums, historic walks, family programming, and to have an ongoing calendar of public events to build on and expand on what goes on already in our Village Green, which is the Teddy Bear Festival. We have Taste of New Milford, we have the Village Fair, Halloween, Trunk or Treat, and to kind of have apparel thing going on down along the Riverfront. To remediate and repurpose the industrial brownfields, as you know, there's Century Brass, Public Works is considered a brownfield, there's the two oil companies down there. And in repurposing, and this is a picture from the city of Lowell, Massachusetts, which got a lot of brownfield money, and they took that brownfield and turned it into that park and walkway. We'd like to provide a range of in-town housing options, event and community facilities, to have new business opportunities and employment opportunities, which will then provide the town with economic benefits such as a better tax base, more balance, bring in public and private investment, bring in jobs that pay, family wage-earning jobs, and anchor establishments like museums or college institutions. We'd like to emphasize the Housatonic River for the powerful asset that it is, with waterfront activities, passive recreation, we have the River Trail to restore historic ruins, to become attractions for tourism, and these accessible views are worth a million dollars, just the view. And then to incorporate our local ecology by enhancing, again, and protecting the river and increasing environmental education. So what have we done? We have long-term planning underway. As the town council knows, since you approved the application for the grant, we received a $170,000 brownfield area revitalization grant from Connecticut's Department of Economic and Community Development. As part of that grant, a condition was that the town had to establish a steering committee specifically for the grant, which you have done as well, called the BAR Grant Steering Committee. Coincidentally, the membership parallels that of the Riverfront Revitalization Committee so that both committees will work in sync. So the Riverfront Committee and the BAR Committee, the Riverfront Committee first distributed RFQs for master plan and market analysis. Once we got the state grant, some of the parameters changed, especially funding was cut. We asked for 200, we got 170, and then the state was asking us to do some other things. So we issued a new RFP and a new RFP for the market, master plan and the market analysis. We're reviewing the RFPs for the master plan. As we speak, our committee has to read out 12 of the submissions by tomorrow night, when we're going to look and decide who will be the finalists, and we hope to be back here in a month asking for your approval of the selected candidate. The market analysis is out to bid. We expect to be awarding that the very beginning of January and to have that study completed by May 15th. And the master plan would probably be completed by September of this coming year, which would dovetail perfectly with the master, with the plan of conservation and development, which the Planning Commission and the town council are undergoing, so that all that good information can go right into the P O C D. What have we done? We've increased public attention and interest. We beautify the town streetscape and its image with public and private resources. I want to thank the mayor's office, Park and Rec, and Public Works for really working as a team to make that happen. We've introduced some new activities for interest and excitement. We've raised the awareness of the connection and the synergies that are in existence between the Riverfront and the downtown, and we've shown that the Riverfront and the downtown can truly be looked at as a unified space, not as two distinct and opposing business centers. They really have to be treated as one. We've initiated a systemic maintenance system for the Riverwalk, pictured here on the bottom. You can see the mayor with Mike Zabre, our Public Works Director, Dan Calhoun from Park and Rec, and members of the Riverfront Committee who worked to, this year, clean off the banks. If you remember, the trees, you know, from two years ago that were cut down, were already, you know, 10 feet tall. Richard Rosiello, one of our members, works for Meadowbrook Gardens, and Meadowbrook was kind enough to donate over $5,000 of labor to clear the banks. And so to make sure those banks stay clear, Richie met with the mayor and Mike Zabre and Dan Calhoun to come up with a way that will keep it looking good, so we won't have to go back for major cleanup. We've also launched the One Mile Down to the River walking loop that goes from, you walk from Town Hall down Bank Street, cross Railroad Street, follow Patriot's Way, down to the River Trail, and then come back up Bridge Street. And so that is being formalized. Again, thank you to the town council for appropriating $80,000 so that a sidewalk can go in and it can be safe for the public next year. We began working with the town to improve and maintain landscaping and high-profile entrance corridors, to instill pride in our appearance and to reinforce our town's image so it'll be a go-to destination. You can see here Judge Landreeb at the courthouse really did a wonderful job fixing up the properties. Pete, I'm sorry, the mayor, took the old sign, that sign is so old, it goes back to 1993, and he had it refurbished, repainted, looks just like it was made yesterday. And Park and Rec has been replacing all the broken railing along Patriot's Way. So, you know, everything's step by step, but it's happening. We've begun planning phase one of the New Milford Industrial Heritage Trail, which would run from the railroad station down to the Bleachery. These buildings are historic resources that nobody even realizes are there. And when you take a walk down, and ultimately we'll have signage and posting and a guided brochure, the train station was built in 1886, the Heritage Inn, 1870. You can see other buildings, 1869, 1865, 1899. And then it takes you down to the Bleachery and the ruins that are in Hidden Treasures Park, which go way, way back. I mean, that site has been utilized for 300 years as an industrial site, so there's a lot of history there. We've identified a potential loop for a downtown historic loop. We've had some initial outreach with the Historical Society and the Historic Trust for Preservation. The example I have here is from Millbrook, New York, Museum and the Streets Program. This same program exists in Danbury. We could do something similar or, you know, make it our own. But, you know, we have to incorporate these downtown trails so they can become economic and community development engines. And I'm actually going to a Main Street seminar this Friday to learn more about doing that. We've identified the economic potential of the Hidden Treasures ruins. With the town council's approval, we applied for it and received a grant from First Life to assess the conditions and future use possibilities. The scope of work went out. We need a little bit more money to make this happen. There's been discussions with the state Historic Preservation Officer, and Tammy in December will be applying for a grant from them so that we can complete this project. When the state historic officer saw this, he said towns would die to have these ruins here because they, he understands, you know, what they can do, and it can really, it would lay, right now it lies along the proposed bike trail route. You know, it would just be a fabulous thing to see renovated. We've identified some new options for vitality. We're talking about a transportation hub. The mayor is talking with some transportation companies about coming through New Milford to help move people on their way to New York or up to Pittsfield. We could have car rentals there, bike rentals, kayak rentals, ski rentals. I mean, we could, you know, it could really be a transportation hub and really focus on ecotourism. And we've looked into a synthetic ice rink, and we've come up with a price and a program, but we have to figure out how we can maintain it and how we can run it because it's, it needs money to make that happen. So I'm sure we'll talk about that again in the future. And we were able to, we had a visit here by a gentleman named Dev Patik, who is the CEO of Sports Facilities Advisory, Sports Facilities Management. It's an international consulting company that deals specifically in sports events and facilities and also regular events. And so it was really a very enlightening and inspiring conversation, and hopefully that will be pursued. We promoted the vision out there with the public, with town agencies as well as civic groups, from the Lions Club to the Rotary Club, Chamber of Commerce, the list is there. We have a Facebook page that we were starting to use. It was set up about two months ago, and we promoted things like, you know, the recent meeting with the train campaign, people from Great Barrington. We promoted, of course, our Riverfest festival, and it's really getting some good use. When it posts and shares, it was really wild to see. I've never seen hits like that, so I was really, on anything I've done. So I was really very excited. So we've utilized digital and also traditional media with the local newspapers, doing lots of articles about downtown, about the Riverwalk, about the loop and Riverfest. And speaking of Riverfest, on October 13th, the town held its first-ever Riverfest on Young's Field Road. And I just want to thank, there's so many people to thank. I'll start with the Park and Rec Commission, the Public Works Department, the Health Department, the town council, the mayor's office, the mayor's staff. I mean, everybody was just tremendous. The Health Department, the Fire Marshal, the Building Department, I mean, the youth agency, everybody that helped. It was just absolutely wonderful. The Police Department was there. It was just really a wonderful day, albeit the weather wasn't great. As you all know, it rained that morning and then it rained again at 3 o'clock in the afternoon and you could see your breath. So considering all that, it was a very successful event. We had sponsors, and again, I'm going to thank the mayor for helping us to, to contact some of these people, Kimberly Clark, David Spank of Danbury, New Milford Hospital, a number of local individuals and anonymous donors contributed. The Corporation for New Milford's Economic Development was our fiduciary agent, and I95 was kind enough to give us free advertising and to do a remote broadcast that day from the site. We had all kinds of activities. We had musicians, we had magicians, we had a movie, courtesy of the Bank Street Theater setup. We had 50 volunteers who worked that day. Thank you, Michael Nahal was one of them. He was there pretty much the whole day in seeing what went on. Our committee volunteered, Kathy Castanaga, Kathy Sierra was there for the entire day. You know, it was just wonderful to see so many volunteers helping. We had eight food trucks plus a burger booth that featured D. Hoak Farms' grass-fed, additive-free beef as well, and so that was terrific. We had over 1,300 attendees, and we know this because we had clickers counting the people as they came down. And then that doesn't count the people that came in from the gates that we didn't have. You can see it's a lot of families. It was a family day. The playground was overwhelmingly overrun by kids. It was just, it was fantastic to see it being used like this. We had booths, we had goat boy soaps there, we had May Apple Farms, the youth agency, local businesses came, Dr. Alan Phillips and Orthodontist came and offered free caricatures for children. I mean, there was just a lot of variety and a lot of community support. And then we had the famous beer garden, beer and wine garden, that first for Young's Field, and we partnered with Housatonic River Brewing, who generously helped us with the beer, and they sent people down to us, we sent people up to the brewery. It was a wonderful synergy between us, and again, WRKI was there. So some of the observations we learned from Riverfest, that it was overwhelmingly positive. I mean, none of us heard a bad word, except for the weather. There was excitement about using Young's Field in a different way, and that people were looking for something to do after dinner. They were all coming down Bank Street at the end because they saw the lights to come see what was happening. That there was a synergy proven between downtown and the Riverfront. The main access for people, again, was Patriot's Way. Bank Street and downtown drew new customers. I went around to the different stores to talk with some of the business owners because there was concern from some people that this might hurt business, but overwhelmingly they did better than they do on a normal day. And as Lenny, who owns Swank on Bank, said to me, she picked up four or five new customers. Any day you pick up a new customer is a good day for business. And like I said, the Housatonic River Brewing, you know, we send people there, they send people to us. Considering the marketing that was done, because this really did come together very late because we were worried about funding and didn't want to commit to anything until we knew we had it, it was a pretty high number of attendees, and the vendors and food trucks said that it was a good day as well for them. So here's to next year. So the Riverfront Revitalization Committee is asking that you, the town council and the town, form a permanent committee, that it would be, because this is a long-term endeavor, it's kind of like a building committee, it just goes on and on and on, and this could go on forever because there'll always be a Riverfront. because there'll always be a riverfront to take care of. To appoint a permanent committee will prevent a loss of momentum. We have a lot of public support, we have a lot of town support, and we would like to keep this going. By having a permanent committee, it will emphasize the project, the Riverfront Revitalization, its importance to the town and its long-term economic success, and it will keep us focused on the project. We'd like to ask the Town Council to consider reappointing the current members to the Riverfront Revitalization Committee with possibly one or two additions. We did have one resignation, and there will be an alternate openings as well. The members there have demonstrated their commitment to this transformative mission. They've come to, I can't tell you how many meetings, have read how many books, how many papers. We did a lot of research, we had outside experts coming to speak to us, so we have a really good body of knowledge. And we have the ability to bring the public into the process and to build a consensus for this project. We would also ask the Town Council, along with the appointment of this committee, is that in next year's budget, we have some resources and some funds so that we can implement some projects. That's to be decided, of course, at a later date. But our vision will remain the same, to transform New Milford's riverfront, to connect the riverfront to downtown, and to respect and protect the Husatonic River. Our next steps would be to complete the master and marketing plans, to continue spearheading beautification and landscaping efforts, to launch activities connecting the river and downtown, to institutionalize River Fest and expand the format perhaps to two days. We're already investing in infrastructure like the tent and the porta toilets and the lighting, so why not get out, get more money, you know, beg for your money by having it for two days. We want to be able to connect with the Bike and River Trail Boardman Bridge Committee and downtown business associations to work together, to benefit all. Explore that feasibility of the transportation hub. We don't have to really wait for the bus service. Maybe we can entice a bike rental kind of company to come, like they have in some cities, where you just, you know, put your card in a slot, get a bike and ride the trail. And then, of course, to implement the master plan in collaboration with the EDC and the corporation, the town stakeholders and residents. And I thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Be glad to take any questions if you have any.
I just want to thank Leva for the work she did at River Fest and the rest of it. It was a fun event. I enjoyed it. It was a nice community event, seeing people I haven't seen in a while. The food trucks were wonderful. It was a fun, it was a relaxing, fun day. And it'll be nice next year, we get from other nations to cooperate.
Thank you, Mike.
No problem.
Any other questions for Mayor Furman?
Peter.
Dr. Malone?
Mayor Furman, I was just wondering what the cost of that market analysis is going to be, the one under accomplishments?
Right, there's thirty thousand dollars currently in the budget, and so we're hoping that the consultants will come in with that number.
And, I'm, uh... Malone and McBroom did this map.
They did. They assisted us in the application.
They put north in that direction?
Well, you know what? I did probably, because I was cutting and pasting the pieces up their map. Did I, did I do it wrong? I forgot to rotate it. Okay, I'm sorry. I'll come back the next meeting with the correct presentation.
More reason that we need to have Malone and McBroom, I guess.
No, it was not them, it was me. My map was going up and down.
We need them.
Thank you, Leva.
Okay.
Anything else for Mayor Furman? Thank you, Walter.
Just a comment, Leva, that you and the committee, outstanding job, just an outstanding job. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
And we'll say one thing, Mayor Furman, did a lot of this work by herself. She came in front of the parking rec a few times, and she had a lot of hurdles.
I'm a regular member of Park and Rec, yeah.
Being part of the parking rec, you had a lot of hurdles and a lot of stuff and a lot of homework you had to go and come back with and stuff. So, you did a lot of work yourself, and I'm hoping that a lot of people jump on board with you next year and help you out.
They will. We're starting in January. You'll get a little better asking.
But, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mayor. Next, Pension Committee update. Phil.
The committee has worked vigorously and generously to improve all aspects of this pension plan. It's very strong. I know the last report I gave you was on the prior actuary report, prior fiscal year. I'm very pleased. Greg Valero's done tremendous help, Greg Ossoff tremendous help. The committee decided to move the discount rate even further down. We started a few years ago, we're trying to get it from the eight percent, which is a ridiculous rate of return, they call it discount rate, down to what I feel should be like five and a half, maybe six. The last couple of years were budgetary pressures and all, we moved away from doing that. We went back to it this year. We moved it from the 7.5 down to the 7.35 percent. So, we tweaked it a little bit. Again, being the goal of the committee, to get it down to six, maybe five and a half. I had made a bunch of copies for the council members that you're going to have to look at. In the executive summary, in 2018, July 1, your next budget cycle, which should be coming up pretty soon, you'll be budgeting eighty thousand dollars less than the par, than the existing one. That's, that's, that's good news. From 2.658 million to 2.579 million. And the reason for a lot of that is the increase in asset of the plan. The summary of principal results, July 1 of this year versus July 1 of 2017, we went up eighteen, nineteen more people on the plan. Between active members, terminated, invested, and members in paid status, that have either collected a pension. So, we're up nineteen. The asset of the plan, from July 1 of 2017 to July 1 of 2018, went up 2.5 million. The asset value grew. The unfunded liability, the UAL, went down one million dollars. We still have a large unfunded liability, which has been created over years of contractual obligations, increases in that, increases in payroll. There's about nineteen million dollar payroll that's involved with this plan. So, if you go back to 2008, if the payroll was twelve million, and today is nineteen million. So, that keeps increasing the unfunded liability because you're paying a pension based on payroll, payrolls either. Again, almost fifty-eight million to sixty-point-five million, or a 6.13 percent increase in this asset value. That's basically the abridged version of this whole document. What I always look at and always recommend to the council is those that are between twenty and twenty-four years of service, twenty-five and twenty-nine, thirty and thirty-four and thirty-five plus. You can see there's a large basis of your employment that may be trending towards retirement very soon. So, they're becoming what is called paid status. Those unfortunately that fall off the plan, unfortunately, from passing away or whatever. I hope that, none of them do, but unfortunately, it does, it did happen. We, like I said, we went up nineteen more people into the plan. So, there's a lot of pressure, I call upward pressure, that's placed on this plan. And what's very important, and I know Greg Valero's been working very hard on this, is to look at negotiations and tweaking some of the ins and outs of what puts the pressure on the plan, being fair to the employer, employee, rather, and being fair to the employer, the taxpayer. So, it's sustainable. The state of Connecticut cannot have this kind of news. Now, with the ninety billion dollar unfunded liability that it has, they never handled their pension plan like they should have. They ignored funding it many years because of budgetary pressures. The town is, all the administrations, the current administrations, have been, did the right thing and funded it properly. Didn't look the other way because of budgetary pressures. Because that just increases your unfunded liability. So, that's a very abridged version of what the committee has done. And, any questions?
You guys did a great job.
Walter?
I'll give you two.
Just one quick question. Thanks, Tom, for your work.
Thank you.
What percent are we at funded for the pension? I recall years ago, we were at eighty-seven percent.
Yeah.
Do you know what page that is on the grid?
Yeah, yeah, it is in here. Just one more, one more, one additional point. The benefits paid and expenses are 3.9 million, which probably four hundred thousand of that, I checked with Greg Ossoff, was two police officers took their contribution out lump sum. So, you do a couple hundred thousand times two people, that's four hundred thousand. So, that's why that's 3.9 million. And that comes out of the asset of the plan, but they also get less pension, their redundant pension. I want to say eighty, eighty-four percent. I know it's there. Yeah, I remember seeing it tonight when I was studying this. Uh, I'm sorry. The funded ratio, eighty-five point seven percent. Page 11. Covered payroll, nineteen million. The unfunded, you approve liability, ten million.
Okay, thank you, Tom.
Tom, I'm not a math major, but I certainly don't want to lose you. Maybe you should move up to the state level. You and the committee, you and the committee do an outstanding job.
Thank you, thank you. The committee worked very hard.
Yes, keep going, outstanding.
The, you know, it's been many, many years to have many, several administrations, including Mayor Furman. In fact, I remember, I was on the Town Council when Leva was mayor, and we looked at, starting to aggressively look at this pension plan because it's very important and was funded properly through all the administrations that I can remember. Because, again, remember, it goes back to 1964, when it was a one-shoe-fit-all type of plan. And then it morphed into all these machinations, through negotiations, to where it puts a lot of pressure on, you know, the funding apparatus to feed this. And again, you want to be fair to employers, but, uh...
You're a terrific keeper, Tom.
Yeah.
You're a terrific keeper.
It's been a lot of years with the committee, a lot of years of the committee working very diligently. We had a meeting in August, and it's tough to get a quorum sometimes because people work during the day, and I respect that. A meeting at night is tough because you got the actuaries coming in from out of state. So, you've got to put them up in a motel. So, we met, last time, August 14, we had a quorum. We decided to move the discount rate down a little bit. I had some initial concern with that because it does put up with pressure on budgets, but I said, let's, let's start it again. And, but fortunately, with all the other investment strategy changes, that we're actually got a budget eighty thousand dollars less than your current budget. So, that's, that's helpful. And Greg Ossoff told me tonight, or earlier today, rather, that the advisors are going to charge us three basis points less than what the current contract is because of the asset growth of the plan, because everything is based on asset growth. So, they're going to be charging us a little less. So, that was good news on, on cost of the, of the plan. But, now, it's, you don't want to gamble with public money, or anybody's money, but public money, taxpayer. So, the assets are very strong assets. I don't, I don't believe in gambling with, with any money, no money, public money. So, so, it's a strong, it's a strong plan. And to get the unfunded liability down, it takes a long time because payroll goes up, payroll goes up, you know, contract negotiations change, different things, market changes. So, right now, it's, it's strong. And, and the good news, besides it being very strong, is that, like I said a couple of times, your budget is going to be less impacted by the growth of this plan. So...
Tom, I just want to say what everybody says. Thank you very much for all the work. You and I, I know you have a committee with you, but I appreciate your giving us the high points tonight and all the work that went into this.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
It's, you know, with the actuaries being out of state, you know, it's, and they have to be here. And the committee can meet, but you're talking about what? So, it's hard, you know, we haven't had a lot of, many meetings, but the ones we've had are important. We've had a couple where we didn't have a quorum. So, we just listened and not taken any action. But it was important to get the information set forth at the meeting, just for Greg Valero and Greg Ossoff. So, the committee members have worked very hard, everybody has. So, it's been a good committee.
Thank you.
Nine thirty, I have some condones at the round table since you've saved a lot of money. You're the coffee man tomorrow.
All right, okay, okay. And I do not want to take on a state's problem. I'm, I'm good at math, but I don't want to deal with that math.
Okay.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Moving on to item 10, move to accept the 2019 Town Council regular meeting schedule as presented. You all have a copy of this, councilors.
One question. Last year, didn't we have one meeting in July?
Yeah, but it wasn't in our...
Right. So, I have a motion. Is there a second?
Too much.
Have a second?
Second.
Okay.
Any other discussion?
We did only have the one in both July and August, and we ended up with a huge backlog in August and September. As a matter of fact, we still are slogging through some of it. So, I mean, you know, if we're away, we're away, and some people can't make it. But I think it's good to schedule it personally.
Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Both?
Item 11, this would be for our public hearings, but we left those open, correct?
No, this is the...
Your municipal roads ordinance was closed.
Oh, this is from the last meeting. Oh, sorry, Matt, sorry. Okay, so, move to accept the, move to accept, to approve the addition of Ordinance Chapter Two, Article 10 Municipal Roads Committee to Code of Ordinance as proposed. This public hearing was closed October 22nd, 2018.
Aye.
Any discussion? This is to make the Roads Committee a permanent committee. All those in favor?
Aye.
Reposed, thank you.
Recession, we have.
Recession, please.
Yes, we have, so...
I have to go back to four D.
Right, okay, these are the ones you want to take out. So, reverting back to road closures, move to accept a request from VNA to close Bank Street at the Southern Crossover over Main Street Friday, November 30th, 2018, 6:00 PM till midnight for sip and stroll. This has been approved by the Traffic Authority on October 23rd, 2018.
I guess my question is...
Well, that's a motion.
Second.
Thank you.
I'm not saying that, I mean, you know, against doing this, but is, is that really consent agenda? Is it just rubber stamping all road closures if the, if the traffic committee approves it? That's more...
Well, I wouldn't say all. I would say...
You could choose like you did tonight to pull it off.
Right.
The agenda.
Right.
Discussion, huh?
Every single item on here gets discussed. So, if you had a reason to not want, well, I don't know, maybe you do for this one. But that's the point of...
No, and I, and the other point is that, is do we, do we expect, if there is a road closure, the group that are asking for the road closure, are they, do we expect them to come here in case we have questions? Because I mentioned that last time that the VNA wanted to close that road for two days, which is very frustrating for the town, for the downtown businesses. So, and I don't, I don't know.
Well, that's closing at six o'clock. I'll just say, and a little in their defense, that it isn't until six when they begin the sip and stroll, and all the merchants are open.
I'm not against anything of closing a road because I like the downtown event, I want to continue them. My only point is that if, if, if we are not just a rubber stamp, shouldn't someone from these groups be here to represent themselves just in case we do have a question? That's all I'm saying. That's all I'm saying.
We are able to ask that and other than the fact that we wouldn't have a meeting, oh, we will have a meeting before November 30.
No, these are continuing ones that I would, I don't, I'm not against. I'm saying because the last time the VNA did that, needed to close that road for an extended period of time, they were not here for me to ask them why they needed to close that road. And that's the point I'm trying to get at, is road closures group.
I understand, I understand.
But it didn't happen because I mentioned that last time.
No, I know. So why don't we ask the mayor if we could, as we've asked people to submit their paper or backup paperwork a certain number of days prior to our meetings, we have time, how about if we make it that if you're going to request anything like this, that you do show up in person or have someone here? Yes, we have talked about it.
Yeah, I know. I didn't. But no, I mean, I'd want to approve these so they can get going because I know it's a lot of work.
But I was going to say to your comment, the rubber stamp, it's really, nothing on the consent agenda is a rubber stamp. It's to facilitate our meeting and it's, every single item on there can be removed as simply as this was, for any reason. Just this is a good reason.
Should we just address the motion? Yeah, we can, let's address this and pass it.
So we have a motion in a second.
All right.
Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
opposed?
And then.
And then Mike will make sure.
Item 2 is a request from the Commission on the Arts to close, a move to accept the close of Southern Crossover, Main Street, Monday, December 17, from 3:00 p.m. till 9:00 p.m. for the annual Carol Singh carriage ride with Mrs. Claus. This was approved by the traffic authority on October 23, 2018.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
opposed?
So can we do that?
And we'll make sure that the applicants are asked to come in case there's any questions from council members moving forward.
Can we put that beginning of the meeting on at the end so they don't have to wait in the meantime?
Motion to adjourn, Mr. Mayor.
Wait a second, wait a second.
Dr. Malone?
Wait a second. Are we doing alarms?
No, because we kept those, those public hearings open.
Because there are amendments being made to the ordinance that Attorney Grimes mentioned and they're not done yet?
Very good.
Motion to adjourn, Mr. Mayor.
We have a second.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
opposed? Thank you.